Counsel Lozaro.
Counsel Lozaro. Counsel Lemming. Counsel Scappelli. Counsel Singh. President Behrs.
Present. Seven present on absent, please rise to salute the flag. Announcements, accolades, remembrances, reports and records, records, the tabled records of the meeting of September ninth, two thousand and twenty five were passed to Counsel Callahan. Counsel Callahan, how did you find those records?
I found them in order. Thank you so much for that update.
Great. On the motion of Counsel Callahan to approve, seconded by, seconded by Counsel Lemming, all those in favor. Opposed, the motion passes. The records of the meeting of September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty five were passed to Vice President Collins. Vice President Collins, how did you find the records?
I apologize, Mr. President, I haven't had a chance to review them, so I'd motion to table.
On the motion of Vice President Collins to table, seconded by Counselor Callahan, all those in favor. Opposed, the motion passes. Acknowledgement of review of continued non-disclosure of City Council Executive Session Minutes dated August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty five under the open meeting law. I'm just acknowledging that we are not disclosing the minutes of the executive session of the City Council dated August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty five because they are still exempt from disclosure under provisions of the open meeting law. Reports of committees, twenty four zero seven three and twenty four three five four offered by Counsel Lemming. Counsel Lemming.
Thank you. At the Resident Services and Public Engagement Committee, we discussed the results of a few recent listening sessions and released the summer newsletter, motion to approve.
On the motion to approve by Counsel Lemming, seconded by Counselor Singh, all those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Motions, orders and resolutions, twenty five one four nine, resolution to establish a recruitment and hiring process for the city clerk. We discussed this last week, and I do have an update from the solicitor. Give me one second here. All right, so I went back and forth a little bit with Solicitor Foley on these questions that the council had about the process. I know folks were talking about wanting to see if we could all do a preliminary screening, how that would affect executive session. I'll just read, basically, I think there's two options. One is, three members could meet in a preliminary screening committee, which is something that is specifically spoken about in the open meeting law. And that group could, it's not a quorum of the body, that group could decide to go into executive session to screen applicants for, for, basically for interviews. The other thing that we could do is all members could look at the resumes and recommend whoever they want to be interviewed, and then that could move forward. You know, all of those people would move to interview stages, and then counselors who want to be involved in those interviews, one or two in each of the rounds could be part of the interviews. And then in either direction, we would receive three finalists who would then be coming before us in a public session and being, we would pick from the three finalists. I can read a little bit more, or I could go to, I could, I'll just read a little bit more. This is from the solicitor. The AG's Division of Open Government issued a determination on this issue and held as follows, "A public body may create a preliminary screening screening committee to interview applicants for employment or appointment." Under General Law Chapter thirty A, Section eighteen twenty one A eight, that preliminary screening committee may meet in executive session under purpose eight to quote, "Consider or interview applicants for employment or appointment if the chair declares that an open meeting will have a detrimental effect in obtaining qualified applicants. Provided, however, that this clause shall not apply to any meeting, including meetings of a preliminary screening committee, to consider and interview applicants who have passed a prior preliminary screening. And a preliminary screening is defined as, quote, "The initial stage of screening applicants conducted by a committee or subcommittee of a public body solely for the purpose of providing to the public ballot body a list of those applicants qualified for further consideration or interview." And it says that a preliminary screening committee must consist of fewer than a quorum of the members of the parent body, and it may include additional members who are not members of the parent body. And then you have to keep minutes. Is there anything else in here? Solicitor Foley said, "In my opinion, less than a quorum of the city council members could serve on a preliminary screening committee, review the applications and resumes, and assist in deciding who warrants an interview in round one." So I'll stop there. I'll go to Counselor Lozaro, and then Counselor Scappelli, and then Counselor Singh. Counsel Lozaro.
Thank you. My personal preference would be for us all to receive resumes and express our preference. That way, I think it avoids open meeting law issues and gives us all an opportunity to see who the applicants are without making anybody feel put on the spot too early, or that just seems like the most democratic way to go about it, from my perspective. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Scappelli.
Thank you, Counsel President. I concur with my fellow counsel. I think it's important that this council and this body maintain the total control of who this, this person is. I think it's important that, I was, I was going to lead with that, that once we all see the applications that we would report or send those top three recommendations, or if we had, find that we found four out of, let's say, ten, that we give it to our committee of three, Counsel President Behrs, I think we talked about that, and and then the final three would then, or the, the committee of three, I feel comfortable with the committee of three then moving forward and making sure we don't violate any, any open meeting laws, and then bring us to the final, final steps. But I think it's important that this position doesn't come from the administration. This position is the only position that works for us, and we need to make sure that we have the trust of that person, and their, their goals and our go, our goals and the shared objectives are met without any influence, because you could say there isn't, but if it's coming from a different office, there's no guarantee. So I think it's important that we, we follow through with this process from the first step to the end. So so I would make the same recommendation that the council reviews all of the applications, and then whatever set number that may be, that we then send that over to the council president or the assigned or the chosen three council members that would then go through the process and then bring us the final two for any, any final decision. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Singh.
Thank you, President Behrs, and thank you for working on this. Last week, we spoke to the importance of the council having a say in the process, especially since the city clerk is, is partially responsible to the city council. This person, whoever they may be, is one of our only employees, if not the only employee that we directly supervise. And this employee will be in charge of modernizing an office that requires a lot of work. There's been a consistent effort down there for a very long time, and I know residents are clamming for things to pick up as well. And so we will really need, as a city council, to have the fullest say that we can in this process. In my opinion, that second option that Counsel Lozaro and Scappelli mentioned is the most inclusive way that we could move forward with this. It gives all of us a chance to have a say in the process as well, because I know all of us as counselors are looking for different things, maybe a lot of similar things, but It gives all of us a chance to have a say in the process as well, because I know all of us as counselors are looking for different things, maybe a lot of similar things, but we are all, you know, we, we have our, our approaches to the office. One could say that we are independent thinkers in this process. And, and because of that, I think that the, the second path of all of us looking at resumes and recommending candidates is a path well trodden and a path that will best include all of our diverse opinions.
Thank you, Counselor Singh. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, President Beers. I appreciate you working with Solicitor Foley on an approach to this. I think that I would be comfortable with either of the approaches that you outlined. I think I agree with my fellow counselors. I think the bottom line for me is, I think it's very important that this hiring process be run by the City Council and not by the administration. The city clerk is our employee. And I think it would be inappropriate for the hiring process to reflect otherwise. I would have been happy with either approach, but I'm happy to agree with my counselors. I think it will be relatively easy for us to all review the resumes. I'm glad we'll all have a chance to weigh in. And I think it's a fair way to make sure that all of our preferences are accommodated, that we can each essentially have a say in who progresses to the interview round, and take things from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Callahan. And if you could talk for a bit, I'm trying to write this up, so.
Oh, great. I'll stall here. I was just going to say that I am very comfortable with this, but that I do want to highlight that there is, there are two parts here that I think might be being talked about. I assume people are talking about a group of three, so we each get the resumes. We each can look at them and make a recommendation individually and privately. And then, it sounds like a group of three, Counsel Scarpelli is suggesting, I'm mentioning you only to ask and make sure that I'm not saying something that's incorrect, that a group of three would finalize the list of candidates to interview. And then there is also the initial interviews conducted by, and that has city council designee. So, just wanted to mention that as another point that I'm not sure if people are considering, but, but there are both of those, the finalizing the list as well as the, the conducting of the initial interviews.
Yeah, my interpretation was, maybe we would take a vote tonight to designate three people who would then participate in those rounds. Does that sound right, Counsel Scarpelli? All right.
I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
All right. No, you didn't. Anyone else have any thoughts here? All right, give me one second then. My apologies to everybody. Sorry, just want to make sure I get this right. Does anyone want to potentially put their name in as a designee? We could talk about that a little bit. Is anyone interested? You can, I'll recognize you. Counsel Lozaro.
Do I need to speak about it? I am interested in interviewing.
Okay. Counsel Callahan.
I will, I'm willing, if no one else will do it, because I want to do my fair share of the work.
Okay. Is anyone else interested in being a designee here? I'm happy to do one as well. Oh, Vice President Collins.
My, I was going to offer to count myself out, seeing as I'm the one counselor who is confirmed to probably not be working with the next city clerk, but if there are not enough volunteers, I'm happy to serve on the interview committee.
Right, and I'm seeing no objections from Counsel Singh, Scarpelli or Lemming as to wanting to be one of the designees. All right, so Counsel Lozaro has nominated herself, Counsel Callahan, and then I can do it, or you can do it, whatever you prefer. Right. I can do it. Okay. All right, I will, I will, I will, I will, I will represent men as, as best as I can on, on this committee. No guarantees, guys. All right, so what I have here is an update to Section Three Interview Process, so it would now read, "All applications will be sent to city counselors for review, and counselors will submit the names of candidates they want to see interviewed to the Director of HR to submit for the HR Coordinator for scheduling of interviews. The City Council will appoint three designees to participate in the interview process. All names of candidates selected for interview will be kept confidential. Initial interviews are conducted by city staff and city council designees. Specific questions and/or scenario questions will be developed by the Director of HR and DEI Director for approval by the council designees. All candidates for interviews will be asked the same standard questions. The DEI Director will formulate, basically, a rubric with the questions prior to interviews. Calendar invitation will be sent to all interviewers, which will include a copy of the rubric, questions and the applications. Following the interview process, all documentation will be collected and kept on file by HR. The HR Coordinator will contact candidates selected for a second interview and schedule time for the second interview. The second interviews will be conducted by, again, city staff and the city council designees. Specific questions prior to the second interview will be developed for approval in the same manager manner as the first process, so essentially if there are, prod, like, if we want to do solve this problem type question, and then the top ranking three candidates will be submitted to the City Council for action. Counsel Callahan.
Thank you. Do I remember correctly that we mentioned last time that it could be different designees for the second round of interviews?
Yeah, I don't think we can this way. I think, like, we could decide if one of us wants to be in the first round, two of us in the second round, or whatever combination of that we want to.
Oh, so only these three people will be?
In the, in the first, in these, yeah, exactly. Because if we do more than that, then they, they're, yeah.
Thanks.
Okay. Do we have other questions, thoughts? All right. Is there a motion to adopt the amended process for the interviews on the motion of Counsel Callahan, seconded by, seconded by Vice President Collins? All those in favor, opposed, motion passes. And is there a motion to approve the main paper on the motion of Counsel Singh to approve, seconded by Counsel Callahan? Just going to call the roll on this one. Mr. Clark, please call the roll. This is approving the whole thing as amended, yeah.
Counsel Callahan. Vice President Collins. Counsel Lozaro. Counsel Lemming. Counsel Scarpelli. Counsel Singh. President Beers.
Yes. Seven affirmative, none of the negative, the motion passes. Twenty five one five two, offered by Counsel Lozaro and Counsel Lemming, resolution to increase pedestrian safety at Boston Avenue and High Street. Give me one second here. "Whereas the City Council received a letter dated September twentieth, two thousand and twenty five, from Victoria Barowski, age ten, that highlighted dangerous conditions for pedestrians at the intersection of Boston Avenue and High Street in West Medford. Now therefore be it resolved that the Medford City Council request an update on the pavement marking plan for the High Street corridor from Boston Avenue to the West Medford High Street Rotary and any other potential traffic calming and safety measures available to increase the safety of pedestrians. Be it further resolved that the Medford City Council invite Traffic and Transportation Director Todd Blake to present said update." Counselor Lozaro.
Actually, if I can offer Counsel Lemming to read the letter.
Thank you, and I would like to thank my colleague Counselor Lozaro for really spearheading this. On September twenty eighth, Medford City Council received the following letter. Dear Medford City Council, my name is Victoria, and I'm ten years old, and I'm writing to you because I think there is a problem on Boston Avenue and High Street intersection. I live right near that street and have to cross it every day with my sister on our walk to school. Recently, my friend got hit by a car on that street. He was fine, but it was still scary knowing that it happened. A few years ago, my dad and I walked around with a petition to fix this street, and we got over a hundred and fifty-nine responses. If you want to know more, visit www.westmedford.us. I really hope you can address this problem as soon as possible, so me and one hundred and fifty-nine other Medford citizens can get where they need to be safely, sincerely, Victoria Barowski. I'm familiar with that intersection. Medford has a number of very problematic intersections around town that we do need to improve that one, particularly if you're trying to get through Boston Avenue and turn onto High Street. It's very tricky, very risky, and it's sort of like the center point of a lot of roads coming into it. So I would appreciate any effort that can be done by the Traffic Commission and our transportation engineer to address this. And once again, I'd like to thank my colleague for her efforts on this.
Thank you, Counsel Lemming. Counsel Lozaro.
Thanks. So, there, there are a few similar intersections in that neighborhood where the city has implemented some traffic calming measures that have received a variety of responses from neighbors, some positive, some negative. There's a similar intersection to this one, even closer to where I live, which is at the intersection of Placedod Road and Woburn Street, which is, it's a very wide intersection. So the streets are very wide, though they're each, you know, one lane, but there's a lot of pavement around. And all of that pavement means that cars have to kind of creep out in order to see where they need to turn, because they're at, like, a T-stop. Not a T-stop like the train, like, like they're coming at the end of the road, and they have to turn right or left. In order to see the other cars coming, or any pedestrians or bicycles, you have to, like, be in the middle of an intersection. And there, the curb, the curbs don't go far enough out. I'm not sure why this is that way, but it ends up making the intersections pretty dangerous for cars, definitely dangerous for bikes, definitely dangerous for pedestrians. Many of these intersections do not have any crosswalks at all. I live off of Woburn Street, and when I go for jogs, I go down Woburn Street, and I often cross this intersection where Todd Blake and his traffic department have put new paintings and, like, plastic railings to redirect cars that there's, short of a curb cut, which can be very expensive. They're trying to direct cars to pull forward so you can see better, but there still aren't any crosswalks, because the crosswalks would not be able to be ADA compliant, because you'd have to do curb cuts, and the curb cuts are expensive. Again, it ends up being a million dollars and taking a year as soon as you do curb cuts. So, in the meantime, you can put barriers made of plastic, you can put painting on the ground, and it does make it safer as an, as an interim measure, and it's much less expensive. So, but sometimes neighbors think it's unsightly. It's a, it's a tricky thing to navigate. The intersection that Victoria Barowski mentioned in the letter we all received last week, she's ten years old, she probably goes to the Brooks, she probably walks there from her neighborhood. This intersection is also very wide, lots of pavement. It does have a lot of crosswalks, but there are very wide crosswalks, and cars will drive around curves to get to, to get through the intersection. I do want to read a response that Todd sent me when I emailed him about this resolution. He said, "We've implemented improvements at Boston and High Street on at least two separate occasions. As with other traffic calming initiatives, there have been mixed responses, especially from the aesthetics versus safety crowd. But, as you know, I fully support implementing several." Once again, this involves paint, delineator posts, et cetera. Delineator posts are the plastic posts. There are in-street warning signs that need to be repositioned, but they were still there as of yesterday. That is true. Those are the ones that say, like, you have to stop for pedestrians and crosswalks, but they can get knocked around, but they're there, and they do slow cars down, I believe. We also have a pavement marking plan for the High Street corridor from Boston Ave. to the West Medford High Street Rotary, which would tie into the new DCR markings. There's new painting at the Rotary at the edge of Medford right before crossing into Arlington that was recently repainted. This resolution, the intention was for it to be an encouragement of further explanation and clarification and any other measures we can support for the traffic engineer and that department to keep nudging along any extra safety measures we can do there, because it is pretty dangerous. The road is both somehow too wide and too narrow. I don't know how we've managed that. But, anyway, I appreciate Victoria's letter and her reaching out to us and telling us about this situation. And I'm not sure if Todd was able to make it today. I'm not on the Zoom right now, he's not on. I don't, I think he had a conflict, but maybe we could, I would maybe motion to refer this to public, our Public Works Committee, if we wanted to maybe have a meeting down the road and talk more about it, and how we can offer support from the City Council, though this is really, I mean, perhaps a budgetary issue and a, something just in the traffic engineers department. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lozaro, on the motion to refer to Public Works and Facilities Committee, seconded by, seconded by Counsel Lemming, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, motion passes. Communications from city officers and employees. We have two five one five three, submitted by the Elections Commission. Medford call for election November two thousand and twenty five. Call for election, general municipal, Tuesday, November fourth, two thousand and twenty five. We had ordered that the Elections Commission be, and is hereby authorized and directed, to notify and warn such of the inhabitants of the city of Medford as were qualified by law to vote for candidates at our general municipal election on Tuesday, November fourth, two thousand and twenty five, to assemble at their polling places in their respective wards and precincts, and then to give their votes for mayor, city council, school committee, question one. And the polls of said general municipal election shall open at seven AM and remain open until eight PM. We have further ordered that the following name polling places be, and they are hereby designated for the use at the general municipal election on November fourth, two thousand and twenty five. Ward one, precinct one, Andrews Middle School, three thousand Mystic Valley Parkway. Ward one, precinct two, Firefighters Club, three forty Salem Street. Ward two, precinct one, and ward two, precinct two, Roberts Elementary School, thirty-five Court Street. Ward three, precinct one, Amer- Medford American Legion, three twenty-one Winthrop Street. Ward three, precinct two, Temple Shalom, four seventy-five Winthrop Street. Ward four, precinct one, Tufts University, Ganser Center rear, one sixty-one College App. Ward four, precinct two, twenty-two Walklin Court, Auburn and North Street, Fond du Caro Center. Ward five, precinct one, and ward five, precinct two, Mississauga Elementary School, thirty-seven Hicks Ave. Ward six, precinct one, West Medford Fire Station, twenty-six Harvard Ave. Ward six, precinct two, Brooks Elementary School, three eighty-eight High Street. Ward seven, precinct one, Mystic Valley Towers, north building entrance. Ward seven, precinct two, McGlynn K three eight Public School, three thousand four Mystic Valley Parkway. Ward eight, precinct one, Senior Center, one oh one Riverside Avenue. Ward eight, precinct two, South Medford Fire Station, zero Medford Street. In-person early voting for the November general municipal election will be at City Hall, mainly during business hours, but also on the weekends. Saturday, October twenty fifth, eight thirty AM to two thirty PM. Sunday, October twenty sixth, eight thirty AM to two thirty PM. Monday, October twenty seventh, eight thirty AM to four thirty PM. Tuesday, October twenty eighth, eight thirty AM to four thirty PM. Wednesday, October twenty ninth, eight thirty AM to seven thirty PM. Thursday, October thirtieth, eight thirty AM to four thirty PM. Friday, October thirty first, eight thirty AM to twelve thirty PM. So that's Saturday and Sunday, October twenty fifth and twenty sixth, and the week of October twenty seventh to October thirty first during City Hall hours. I think that's it for now, so I'll recognize Jim.
Good evening. James Blatchford, City Hall, Room two oh, one oh two, Elections Commission. This is to present to you the call for election. The only other important date that's not on there would be the deadline for voter registration, and that would be the day before early voting starts, that Friday, October twenty fourth, until five PM in Room one oh two.
Great. Do we have any questions? We do. I will recognize Counselor Scarpelli and then Counselor Say.
Thank you first, Mr. Blatchford. Thank you so much. I think uh you've settled that office down and we're seeing so many great processes in place. So thank you. Um, I, I just one question that came up with the preliminaries. Unfortunately, I think uh, I'm not sure if November fourth, the schools are open again during voting. I, I think it is. So the only question I have is that one of the schools, I know I talked to the principal, she felt terrible, but they had a parent night. That evening and all we heard were people saying that I, I couldn't park, so I just went home. So if there's, i- i- if there's a way that we coordinate with the principals to make sure or the superintendent that we. Clear any evening activities for election night, that would be super helpful. I know during the day. Uh, there's, there's plenty of time that people go in and out. There's plenty of parking at most locations, but. I think it's important that when you run an event and you have three hundred parents showing up plus voting, it made it very difficult and where people were just walking away from it. We hate to see that. So, thank you.
So unfortunately, um, I was not here when the schedule was set, nor was I here to negotiate with the s- school department. So I can assure you moving forward, that is definitely a conversation that my office will be having with um both the school committee and the administration. But I can tell you right now, November fourth, there is no school. So it is a professional development day within the school district, so there won't be any conflict during the day. Specifically, there shouldn't be any conflict during the evening. Um, but looking forward to future elections. The governor has signed a bill that actually sets the uh election date. I believe it's September first uh for twenty twenty six. And then uh the November election. And we've already spoken with the superintendent and that both of those days will have no school, at least for children. There will be professional development days, but for next year. We've already uh spoken with superintendent, so that should be all said.
Thank you. Counselor Singh.
Thank you, uh, Manager Blatchford, for all you do. Um, our, it's noticeable how much progress Elections Office has made in the last. Last few months especially, but last year. I received some phone calls about um folks who were on uh. They were supposed to be able to vote. They were allowed to vote, but they had the um, the word is slipping my mind.
Inactive.
Yes, inactive uh status attached to them. Uh, I know. I've mostly squared it away with them, but I was wondering if you could take this opportunity to speak to what happened there, what residents should know going forward.
Absolutely. So um, first of all, the, the first thing, if anyone has any questions about their status as a voter. Particularly the inactive versus active status. As a voter, you get to vote on election day, no matter what. So whether you are inactive or active, it just depends on how much paperwork you have to fill out on the day. But prior to election day, you can always check your status at the Secretary of State's website. To see if you are an active voter versus an inactive voter, if you are inactive for whatever reason. Which could include not returning your census form. Um, I sent a piece of mail and it was returned to our office. Anything that uh we cannot confirm your current residence would make you inactive. So if for whatever reason anyone is inactive, they can always come into our office. And update their status. They can sign a census form in my office. Additionally, um, you can re-register to vote almost. Uh, you don't have to, but you can. And it would update your status. Um, but the easiest thing would be come down to my office where we can email you your census in which you can sign and send it back to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions about the call for the election? On the motion of Counselor Scarpelli to approve, seconded by Counselor Singh, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Kelly. Vice President Collins. Counselor Lozaro. Counselor Lemming. Counselor Scarpelli. Counselor Singh. President Behrs.
Yes, seven, the affirmative, none of the negative, the motion passes. Twenty five, one five four submitted by the Elections Commission, Medford Election Warrant, November twenty twenty five. This is functionally the exact same information, but uh per the law, we need to vote to approve this. And then we all need to sign it. And I think I have a copy here for us to sign.
With a pen.
Yes, but I'm guessing that with this folder that says election warrant, it's probably what it is. I'll just quickly summarize warrant for Medford, November twenty twenty five, general municipal, municipal election. Greetings, the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said city or town who are qualified to vote in elections to vote at. The various wards and precincts on Tuesday, the fourth day of November twenty twenty five, from seven AM to eight PM for the following purpose. To cast their votes in the general municipal election for the candidates of the following offices. Offices, mayor, city council, school committee, and question one. As they're on at the time and place of said voting, given under our hands this day, seventh day of October twenty twenty five. The Medford City Council will all sign it and then uh post it at each polling location, the library and City Hall no later than October twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. Any further discussion? On the motion to approve by Counselor Scarpelli, seconded by Counselor Singh, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Collins. Vice President Collins. Counselor Lozaro. Counselor Lemming. Counselor Scarpelli. Counselor Singh. Vice President Behrs.
Yes, seven, the affirmative, none of the negative, the motion passes.
Thank you all.
All right, here we go. Public participation. To participate outside of Zoom, please email our Alicia at medford-dash MA dot gov. Is there anyone either in person or on Zoom who would like to participate? All right, we'll start at the podium. I'm not seeing any hands on Zoom. Give me one second here. All right, name and address for the record.
Sure, um, Mike Castman, four nine nine Main Street. So I am here once again um to. Bring forward to the public as much as possible and I'll be here as long as it takes, as it, as many meetings as it takes. That right now we are going, we are in a crisis that is worsening. Every day when it comes to ICE and federal overreach into our city and community and we're seeing people snatched up still. And the city coun- this council, for the most part, has been fairly active and engaged on this subject. Nevertheless. This council is limited in power and authority in what it can do. Who is the other half of that power and authority that can do more is and continues to be and for the foreseeable future will always be the mayor. And the MPD, the cops. And neither of them have done a single goddamn thing to protect.
No swearing.
Our community.
We gotta avoid that.
From. This continuing illegal activity and federal overreach. The mayor has not even made it a twinkle in her eye, given any attention whatsoever that it merits. And it needs to be the top of her priority list. I will point out that in the last two weeks alone. Two people have been shot in Chicago. And video recording directly contradicts everything DHS has said about it and shows that they were attacked. Without cause effectively by ICE and DHS. Agents. Two people were shot. City councillors have been, or the equivalent aldermen have been arrested for demanding warrant, judicial order. Or articulable probable cause when agents are doing their abductions. An entire building has been raided like it was a military compound. Children frog marched out into the night into vans in their underwear and zip tied. No warrants or orders were presented when that happened. This is getting worse every day. In Massachusetts, in Leominster. Units were using a child to lure a father out of a house. They were effectively conducting, they were conducting a crime, not effectively. That was. Out and out, that, that was a criminal act. That was illegal. They, we can enforce laws against lawbreakers. Just because you have a badge doesn't give you a right to commit crimes that are clearly crimes. The cops can do something and they have to draw a line and we have to say what side they're on eventually because it's really coming to that. It's ridiculous that they haven't even tried to protect the community that they're supposed to. And I'm one of very few people remaining who still have patience and tolerance. That expect and ask the cops to actually work on behalf of the safety and security of the community. So if they want to have a relationship with this city that they supposedly work for, they can start doing their job. That also goes for the mayor. I will mention, and then I will end this long rant, that in Chicago, one thing that has happened recently. Was that the mayor of Chicago recently put into effect a uh ICE free zones where. In fact, you can look into it, but effectively people who live there and businesses that live there can put up signage that. It makes it an area that they have a, um, they're presumptively disallowed from entering without warrant. They are not going to call for the arrest of any agents violating this ICE free zone, but they will use this as a grounds for suing. Uh, the federal government for, you know, illegal activity basically. And this is something, this is a milquetoast bare minimum thing that we could do in this city too. And if more cities went about this, if, if every city that's being impacted did this same thing. It wouldn't fix it, but at least would be the kind of lawfare that, you know, could be effective. So. I'll leave it at that. And I will be here again next session and the session after that, saying the same friggin things. Until we see something come from the administration on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, seeing no hands on Zoom, we'll stay at the podium. Name and address for the record and you'll have about three minutes.
Mary Ann Aducey, Two Knot Street. I was here last week at your meeting and I had asked that you people consider going back to the weekly city council meetings. Primarily because the meetings get to be too long, too many people want to speak. I'm gonna use the August fifth meeting that didn't end till one twenty five in the morning. So I was quite surprised that you were having a meeting tonight because you just had one last week. So this was an unscheduled one apparently. So I want to know if you people have discussed it, the possibility of going back to the weekly session? Because I asked last week that you, you think about this and the, and the voters and I want to know if you're going to consider that.
We haven't had a vote to change the rules. Um, you know, we do meet every week. We meet in committees on a weekly basis and we have regular meetings every two weeks. We are having back-to-back meetings because we rescheduled our September twenty third meeting because it was Rosh Hashanah. And we have again at the end of the month, um, back-to-back meetings also because of a holiday rescheduling.
Okay, so are you possibly going to consider going back to weekly? I mean, I know you haven't discussed it, but are you going to consider it?
I, I can't speak for anyone else, but counselors could put on a chain, you know, a request to change the rules. If they wanted to go back or change to a regular weekly meeting, but I will just note, we've met more since the shift to the committee structure. And those are, those meetings tend to be shorter, focused on one or two topics. They are happening every week. We're, we're meeting. You know, at least the first eighteen months of this term, we were meeting, you know, three or four times a week, you know, two to four times a week. We had, we had more meetings this term than we did in the previous term. So it's not that we aren't meeting weekly.
I understand that. Yeah, I understand your meeting committee, but you don't have the formal council meetings, you know. Every other week is scheduled unless you have to make up for a meeting.
Right.
So, uh, but I know voters. And other residents would like you to go back to the weekly, so I'd like you to strongly consider doing that. Especially if the referendum question passes and you get eleven city councillors. That means everybody's going to need an opportunity to speak, which will lengthen the meetings. So I think you should really consider this going forward, especially if you get eleven people on the council. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's see Ellen on Zoom. Ellen, one second, I'll unmute you. You should be able to start your video when I unmute you if you want. Um, and you'll have three minutes. Name and address for the record, please. Oh, Ellen, we can't hear you. Give me one second.
Okay, I think I'm good now. Ellen Epstein, I live on Grove Street and I just have um a quick question, a procedural question. Which is, um, can you give me some examples of why you go into executive session? Um, I heard one mentioned earlier, like if you're uh talking about hiring. Or looking at resumes, that kind of confidentiality, but what are some other reasons you might go into executive session? Thank you.
Sure, happy to tell you. Um, there are a few reasons that a council can go into executive session under the open meeting law. One is to discuss uh reputation, character, physical condition or mental health of an individual. Uh, or to discuss discipline dismissal. That's the first one, that section, this is Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty one A. And the next one is to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations. The third one is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on bargaining or litigating position. The fourth is to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto. The fifth is to investigate charges of criminal misconduct, consider the filing of criminal complaints. Six is to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. Seven is to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements. Eight is to consider or interview applicants for employment or appointment by a preliminary screening committee. If the chair declares that an open meeting will have detrimental effect in obtaining qualified applicants. Provided that this will not apply to any meeting, including meetings of a preliminary screening committee to consider and interview applicants who have passed a prior preliminary screening. That's the one we were talking about earlier. And then the last one is to meet or confer with a mediator as defined in Section twenty one, twenty-three C of Chapter two thirty-three. With respect to litigation or decision on any public business within its jurisdiction involving another party, group or entity. Well, there's one more, sorry. Uh, ten is to discuss trade secrets or confidential, competitively sensitive, sensitive or other proprietary information. Provided in the course of activities conducted by a governmental body as an energy supplier under a license granted by the Department of Public Utilities. So. That wouldn't be us, but um. Uh, actually, it might be, that, that's a long paragraph. It might apply when a municipal aggregator. Determines that such disclosure will adversely affect its ability to conduct business. We do municipal energy aggregation, so potentially. If we ever had to meet to discuss a new energy aggregation contract, but those are the ten exemptions and then there are some other. And I've, I've timed myself up. There are um some other requirements. We have to convene in an open session. Majority of members have to vote to go into executive session with a roll call vote and the chair has to state which of those ten reasons. The body is entering executive session.
But not to the public. You don't state it to the public.
Well, you have to state which of the purposes, but not like the specifics. So you have to say we're entering it under, you know, purpose. Six, to discuss purchase, exchange, lease and value of real property, but we don't have to say it's for this property for this reason.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
Right, great. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to participate in poll participation? Seeing one in the chamber, we'll go to the podium. Mr. Castanetti, name and address for the record, please, and you'll have uh three minutes.
Thank you, Counselor Behrs, Andrew Castanetti, Christian Street, East Method. Before I start. This is the second time this happened to me, having problems getting on the Zoom out of ten years. It's the second time I've had problems. It says to enter the meeting passcode. I don't see it on the agenda.
Which link did you use?
Sorry?
Uh, how did, like, where are you seeing the link? Or like, what did you click to get to that screen on your?
I did everything that I've done for ten years, but now it says they want a meeting passcode. It's not on this agenda as far as I can tell. But you're having people on, on Zoom, they got through, okay, correct?
They did, yeah.
More than one?
Yeah, there's at least, there's been like seven or eight tonight.
So you know what this, what the passcode is?
I think it is four, seven, nine, zero, nine, five. It's at the end of the call-in number.
With a number sign at the end?
Yeah, so yeah, so the four, the six numbers before the pound sign.
Okay, I'll try that later on and I'll put the number sign in this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And yeah, we'll see if we can update that. If you, if you go to our agenda website, the, the medfordma.civicclerk, and I think if you go to the city events calendar, when you click the link, the password is already a part of it. If you're entering, just if you're typing in this URL, then it might need another passcode. So I'll double check on that, but I think it might be an issue of how the link is getting posted.
Thank you.
All right.
I appreciate your help.
You got it.
I have three minutes.
I'm going to restart your time because we're talking about passcodes.
Thank you.
You're good.
Sometimes you city councillors talk on world issues at the same time versus fixing up newest pothole in town. So now I am, I am talking world issue. Today is two-year anniversary. October seventh, two thousand twenty-three, the slaughter of twelve hundred Jews and non-Jews at a music festival. They took hostages. It seemed horrible as far as on the newscast. But I, I'm not here to blame because I wasn't there and I don't know who these characters are. So I'm not placing blame, but I feel horrible for them and the families. So I'd like to please hear my prayer. Almighty God, Creator of heaven, earth, all sentient beings and more, please get me and all of us to be and do the best that we can. Now, always, forever, and ever, in our quest for eternal blissful peace. Amen. Now, I don't have the authority to ask for a moment of silence, so I'm going to end by saying, lastly, my Christmas wish this year is the Mideast has an everlasting peace for the first time in the last two, maybe three thousand years, period. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone either in person or on Zoom who would like to speak during public participation? Seeing none, I'm going to close public participation. Are there any motions on the floor? On the motion to adjourn by Counselor Lozaro, seconded by Counselor Callahan, all is in favor. Opposed, motion passes, meeting is adjourned.